Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for waiting with us during that delay. And I want to welcome you to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, September the 8th, 2014. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sherlyn, would you call the roll, please?
Council members Lennon, Martin.
Here.
Polika.
Here.
Piana.
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. We do have a quorum. Councilman Lennon is not feeling well this evening, and is there unanimous consent to excuse his absence?
No support.
Awesome, thank you. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. What's council's pleasure on the agenda this evening?
I'd move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Polika. Any discussion? Sherlyn?
Council members Lennon, sorry, Martin, Polika, Piana, Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Next item of business would be presentations, and I think we just have one presentation this evening, but it's a good one. It's the July and August Beautification Awards. Who's presenting those? Both of you, great. Good evening.
Good evening. I believe it's just going to be the July awards.
Oh, just July this evening?
We took the photos, but we don't know what's going on right now.
Okay, we'll catch them on the next agenda.
Right.
All right.
Happy to do that.
For sure, on the next agenda.
All right.
All right. The July winners, the first one is 507 East Maplehurst, owned by John and De'anni Aratori.
It's beautiful.
Lots and lots of annuals and hostess. I didn't bring my notes with me either, so this is kind of...
Oh.
The next one is 454 West Oakridge, owned by Julie and Raymond Robinson. It's the only house that we've seen that has a side porch on the left-hand side, you see that? And that's where we found them as we were taking the photos. And they are just a wealth of information. They've said that this is their house that was their starter home 44 years ago, and it has been a home that they have continued to live in and raise their family. And they sit out on their front lawn every evening and kind of have little neighbor kids come and entertain them. This is part of their property, too. It's just beautiful.
Very nice.
Is that the one with the pool in the back?
No.
That's a different one. Oh, my goodness, okay, okay. The next one is 720 Leroy, owned by Deidra Padilla. The colors are beautiful, that you can't really see all of the combinations, but she's got a blue and a purple that seem to just blend beautifully together, and has lots and lots of annuals, lots of yard art that just fits in perfectly, not too much, just very nice. There, you can see some of it. And the last one, southeast winner, is 424 University, owned by Diana Dennis Emme. They have a lot of layers going on there in their planning, and a nice combination of evergreens and grasses. Plus, they're lucky enough to have a big swimming pool, too. This is still their home.
Dennis served for a long time on the city council, back in the 90s and early 2000s.
And then this is the Coneflower Award, 905 Albany, after Darren Halken. He has quite a variety of echinacea, all different colors.
And we have a Coneflower winner because?
A Coneflower echinacea was adapted, I think, three years ago.
I think so.
It was zinnia, which is a real pretty flower, but it was getting a lot of mold and mildew, so we weren't finding any zinnias. So, the Beautification Commission, we talked about it, and we chose echinacea because of its healing properties and its diverse colors. And it's just a real easily propagated flower, so that's where we got that from.
And it's now the official city flower, correct?
It's the official city flower. And we could use a lot of hopefulness these days, too.
Yes.
So, I also want to mention that on September 27th is the annual perennial exchange. It's going to be from 10:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. at Blooms on East Nine Mile. And we're going to have raffle and things for sale, some speakers. So, we really think it's going to be a lot of fun this year, so I'm hoping that everyone can come. And if anyone would like to volunteer, could they just email us at ferndale.bautification@gmail.com? And there's one thing I wanted to mention, too. Anna was affected by the flood, and I was affected by the windstorm. And I just want to say that how the neighbors just came to our aid and showed a lot of concern. Firstly, my neighbor emptied, we were out of town, so, yeah, she emptied the refrigerator and called DTE and hooked us up with some electricity, house to house. And then the other neighbor offered a generator, so, without even asking, people just really stepped up to the plate, and that's Ferndale.
And it's not to mention the DPW and the way they handled the situation. I was just so, every time I saw one of those guys picking up trash, I just stopped and rolled down the window and gave them, you know...
Oh, and one more. Kudos to the beauty arborist, Brian Cooley, because he showed up this morning, took care of business. Everything looks great, you know, so I really appreciated that, too.
Thanks, thanks for that feedback.
So, I guess we're going to have to do August at the next meeting.
At the next meeting? That'd be great, all right. We welcome you back.
A lot happened to the presentation, it probably is there, but we're missing our technician.
Thank you very much. That concludes our presentations, and I don't see anyone from the schools or county or... Oh, you guys are here to do the... See, I didn't... We do have representatives of the Ferndale Public Schools, so come on up. Our newest trustee member, as a matter of fact. Ah, that's why you're here.
That's why we're here.
Okay, sorry about that, sure.
That's okay. Good evening, my name is Jennifer Latash, and I am currently serving as a trustee on the school board for the Ferndale Public Schools. I've been on since January. And my seat is also up for reelection this upcoming general election on November 4th, so I'm very excited about the past year, and I'm looking forward to six more years of serving the community and our schools. But I also wanted to let you guys know a little bit about what we're doing in collaboration with the schools and the city, which is so exciting for us. As you probably know, we did a lot of work with the community and with the board and with the staff on developing a strategic plan. And a big part of that strategic plan was working together with the community and the businesses and all of our neighbors, with the schools, to bring everyone together. And one thing that we're doing for that piece of the strategic plan is having a big homecoming celebration for all of the communities, all the students, and not just the high schoolers. What we're doing on October 3rd, which is our homecoming night, is there's going to be a big homecoming parade, starting on Nine Mile at Rust Belt, moving down Nine Mile, turning on Pinecrest and into the high school. And then that's going to be followed up by an awesome tailgating party in the parking lot around the high school and the middle school, with bounce houses for the little kids, face painting from the other schools, rock climbing wall. There's going to be a big band shell out, where the orchestra and the choir and the orchestra choir and band are going to be performing. There's going to be food trucks, and there's going to be just a lot of fun, and we're inviting everyone from all the different schools and all the communities to come out and be a part of that wonderful evening. So, it's October 3rd, and we've worked a lot with the DDA and with the city, so we're looking forward to that collaboration. So, thank you very much.
Excellent, thanks. To your colleague on the board, yes.
Hi, guys. So, I'm Anne Kerr Mueller, and I've been serving on the board for the last four and a half years. And I just wanted to announce that my seat is also up in November, and I intend to run and look forward to another six years. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. All right, I think that does conclude presentations, and now the next item of business would be Call the Audience. Call the Audience is your opportunity to speak on anything that you'd like that's not on the agenda, because we'll give you an opportunity to speak to that when we get to it. Come on up, you get three minutes to speak about anything you like. Just give us your name, your address if you're comfortable, if not, put your address in the back, just so we know who you are, although Martha, I know who you are, so welcome.
My name is Martha Sempliner. I own library bookstore on Nine Mile in Ferndale for the past 30 years, and I own the addresses 163 through 171. The Project 360 is something that I am very much against. If you want to destroy a city of human beings and have a corporately runover culture, then that's what that will do. There are a growing number of people, of residents and of businesses, who have been meaning to work against this. It does not mean that there might be some revised vision, but what we have seen so far, visually, with very little fact, very little detail, nothing to really explain what could also go wrong environmentally and otherwise, that's been the situation so far. And a lot of us are really disgusted with that part of the process. Why have there not been more specific details put out? I don't have a lot to say on this. I think it's just a very bad idea that needs an enormous amount of rethinking and reworking. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council this evening? Oops, there. Ladies first.
Does this go with the...
Yeah, you just...
Oh, maybe just... Yeah.
Sherry Wells, 315 West Troy. In the past couple of weeks, I called a Realtor, and I asked her two main questions, and one of them was, is lofts a fad that is going away? And I was disappointed when she said, no, people love them. But the next one, I told her that it's contemplated putting a building of 120 lofts in Ferndale, and she said, no, that would destroy the whole character of downtown Ferndale. You need cool and small and unique boutique-type places, if anything. But then she was saying that Royal Oak is having trouble keeping those lofts filled, and that's something that we've been concerned about. I mentioned that the lofts on Nine are 36 units, I called and found that out. She said, that's a good size. But those things were intended to be sold, and they're being rented. And I know someone who's living there, and as soon as his lease is up, he's gone. It's a lot of rent for what he thinks he's getting. I had also talked with a business owner and was educated to the fact that even though Derek said that we can try to attract the kinds of businesses that would complement our retail, this business owner pointed out that if a landlord can rent for $18 a square foot to a bar versus $13 a square foot to retail, that's what they're going to do. Therefore, a policymaking body, which city council is, needs to decide that as a policy, Michiko Pizza, I understand, is applying for liquor license, because pizza and beer and pizza is one word to some people. But after that, that's it. I've even heard current bar owners saying, little competition is good, we've already got more than enough. We've got a character that is getting so far away from the downtown friendly Ferndale, and to get the mix and diversity and all those other words I hear floating around the DDA and wanting mom and pop and independence, what we have on the Woodward Strip Mall is all internationally owned businesses. So, we're getting away from what we want to continue to be, the unique little part we have. So, city council can make the policy that there will be no more, none of the remaining 20-something liquor licenses that the DDA is authorized to give out by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, whose mission is to monitor the proliferation of bars, and that's what they're doing, watching.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Tish, I think you can have a safe alley to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. Paul Kish, 707 West Hazelhurst. On June 24th, 2014, I filed Freedom of Information Act papers with the city as requested by April Lynch. In that request, I asked for the building permit and the pictures that the code enforcement officer, Jeff, took of the property at 658 West Marshall on May 29th. On July 10th, 2014, I picked up documents which were not the building permit and five pictures which lacked the imprinted date that they were taken. I was told by Barb, the clerk, that I could view those dates in City Hall, but could not have those imprinted unless I had a court date. Here, I've got 25 pictures taken illegally by this city's code enforcement officer, Joe Pirro, in 2010 and 2011. I believe that's Exhibit 15 in the file that I submitted to you. Here is a court date, so what she wanted, I have. That takes me back to October 7th of 2003, which is Exhibit L of the file that I submitted to you. That ticket was for the People of the City of Ferndale against Paul Allen Kish. That takes me back to September 21st, 2010, Exhibit W of the file that I submitted, the People of the City of Ferndale against Paul Allen Kish. You talk about intimidation, the People of the City of Ferndale against Paul Allen Maybe somebody might want to change how they list that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dennis, good evening.
Dennis Augson, 1550 Spencer. We just got rid of, or decommissioned the park, I should say, and the concern is what to do with the property and then... Well, as I was at a park this weekend, the one thing I've noticed is that this park didn't have adequate parking to handle the people that were at this park, and the park wasn't even half full. But it seems to resemble, and I think back on it, all the years that I've been in Ferndale and as a kid growing up, Roosevelt Park, Red Gary Park, has that same problem, okay? Now, as being a part of the Parks and Rec Board net, and we're trying to decide what we're going to do with all this stuff and get a park to where it's going to be drawing in more people, hopefully, I think we need to really look at some more parking spaces, get them off the street, because like this park that I was at, the people were actually crossing 13 Mile. The parking lot was full, and there was plenty of tables left, there was plenty of spaces on the playstations, play areas, and all that stuff with the little kids and all that, okay? Now, if we're going to be trying to bring in that kind of, you know, environment where we can make it friendly for people to walk their dogs, you know, kids come down, play and all that stuff, instead of pushing all that parking off into the neighborhood, we really need to seriously think about also getting more spaces so that people can come off the streets, get out of the neighborhood, not really get out of the neighborhood, but not interfere with your parking, my parking and all that, you know? And Roosevelt Park, Red Gary Park, has been like that for over 40 years. I am surprised that we haven't heard more accident reports from all the police chiefs that have been in the city for the past 40-plus years, because they got one small parking space, and that's down at the far end, but then you go all along Earl Boulevard down there, and that place is just packed, and there's plenty of land there to open it up. Now, I realize it costs money, and it's going to take some money to maintain it and all that stuff, but if we want to make this a family-friendly thing, I think we really need to also seriously consider, along with all the ideas that we've come up with, to bring in the parking spaces to get them off the streets, so we're not interfering with the residents, okay? And I mean, I don't care where you put the park at. I mean, we've, you guys have discussed about, you know, what happened with Saratoga over there, you know, what to do with that property, make it a parking lot, whatever, you know? I think this is something we're going to have to look at when we come to, sooner or later, we're going to come up here and Parks and Rec's going to be, you know, submitting their plans, their ideas, you know, and the city's going to have to make a decision on this, you know? But I think it's something that we really need to look at, for safety reasons.
Thanks, Dennis.
Kind of cute, kind of not at the time. At Geary Park, when a bunch of us were at the pavilion for a picnic, one woman went to go to her car, and from the pavilion, she couldn't see her car. She thought it had gotten stolen. So, I dialed the police non-emergency number, and within a few minutes, a car which had been parked in front of her car, not in front like in front of the hood, but on the grass between the sidewalk and the curb, blocking our vision, and from that distance, you can't see that they're not parked on the street. Just to back up his point.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tina Louise. I just purchased a home at 630 Meadowdale in Ferndale, and...
Welcome to town.
Thank you.
End of the Dales, rural...
End of the Dales, yes, I love it. But I wanted to come and speak to city council today because I'm also, I'm a little confused and a little concerned about the 360 project as well. You know, part of my reason for wanting to live in Ferndale was because, one, it's a very family-friendly area. I chose Ferndale specifically over Royal Oak because I like the idea of the boutique businesses, I like being able to not live around high rises, you know, the thought of if I had a house that was near where the condos were going up or the high rises going up, I would be pretty upset if I had just purchased a home where now all of a sudden I was going to have neighbors that were going to be able to look in my backyard. I think that there are other areas that maybe could be a potential location in Ferndale for something, like the parking lot and the lofts that you're talking about. I also, second, we had someone else who was speaking about the number of lofts. I also, you know, I've, I rented lofts for a while before I decided to purchase because of the same reason, they're not selling. They're not in Royal Oak, they're not downtown, lofts just aren't selling. And so, I didn't, I wasn't sure what type of investment that was for the city. I also questioned, you know, knowing how much money was just recently put into the new parking meters and all of that, so that was an investment for the city, right? So, what type of investment is coming back to the city if that investment is now lost? I also questioned, you know, my little guy, he does karate at the dojo here, over here on Nine Mile, and, you know, for the length of time that there would no longer be parking over there, what happens to those small businesses? You know, is really the amount of, you know, benefit the people who are building the building or the people of Ferndale? And so, it seems to me that it kind of seems like it's more about the people who are building the building and not those of us who live here, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to address council this evening? If not, we will move on to the next item of business, which is the consent agenda. And the consent agenda are items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless council, a council person pulls something from the consent agenda. But let me read it for you now. Item A would be the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held August 25th, 2014. Item B is the adoption of a resolution to authorize the city manager to request supportive aid from the Michigan Municipal League Defense Fund, Legal Defense Fund, in connection with litigation concerning Wolf versus the City of Ferndale. Item C is the approval of a contract between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the City of Ferndale for asphalt resurfacing, drainage, pavement repairs, concrete curb, gutter, sidewalk and ramps, pedestrian signals and pavement markings on East Nine Mile Road from Woodward Avenue to West N Street, and authorization for the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract. Item D is the approval of the one-year service and maintenance agreement with KP Electronics, and authorization to charge the expenses of $12,350 to the Water and Sewer Fund repair and maintenance account. Item E is the approval of the traffic signal maintenance agreement for the intersection of 10 Mile and Hilton, and authorization for the Department of Public Works to execute the agreement. Item F is the approval of the state trunk line maintenance contract between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the City of Ferndale for the period of October 1st, 2014, through September 30th, 2019, and authorization for the mayor and city clerk to sign said contract. Item G is the approval to purchase and install 21 workstations in the amount of $24,530.13 from the General Fund, one workstation in the amount of $1,168 from the Water and Sewer Fund, and one workstation from the Motor Pool Fund in the amount of $1,168 from Vision Networking Solutions LLC, as submitted by our Chief Innovation Officer. And finally, the approval of the bills and payroll is submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support, no questions?
Yeah, there'll be opportunity for comment, but yes, it's moved by Piana and supported
by Martin. Now, questions or comments on the consent agenda?
For item G, the replacement of the workstations, what happens to the old workstations?
The old XP workstations are being consolidated and moved to a new function out of DPW that's called property disposition. At that point, we're breaking them all down, separating them into recyclable properties, and then destroying the hard drives on each one that no longer has any resale value.
They may not have resale value, but I just ask that you consider, there's at least one nonprofit, I think, they're still in business in the city of Ferndale that uses...
We're not in Ferndale, but they're still going.
Yeah, I did, my intent is, I guess, is that if we're at the point where destroying workstations, if there's any opportunity to refurbish them and donate them to nonprofits, I'd like to see us do that.
Sure, we haven't begun the destruction process yet. We've still just, are beginning this program, and we're consolidating all the older stations. But that is our plan right now. I'd be happy to look into, moving forward that. I also want to make sure that we go through any legal parameters that we would need to as far as...
Absolutely.
Getting rid of city property.
Yeah, I'd just like to make sure it's on your radar.
Sure.
Recycle them, we can recycle them with nonprofits.
I'd be happy to.
Thanks.
Congressman Polika, you had a comment?
Yes, I have two. And I actually approached Lloyd before the meeting, so I did get the answers, but I wanted to share my answer, or share the answers with the audience. And the one was on 6D, which is the approval of the one-year service maintenance agreement with KP Electronics. I asked Lloyd why we couldn't do a two- or a three-year contract. I'm not big on having a contract come back every single year. Lloyd explained that this is actually the first extension. We've had a contract with them for one year. They've been doing a great job, but he would like to see one more year of service before he considers another two or three years, and I think that's an acceptable route to take. And the second one was approval of the state trunk line maintenance contract. I was concerned with some of the figures because salt has gone up so much since last year, and Lloyd confirmed that the state actually reimburses us for the salt that we use. So, that's actually separate from the $84,000 figure.
What happens is a... Lost my... What happens is that there's an ongoing adjustment that takes place quarterly for actual costs expended by the city.
Okay. So, I'm happy with those answers.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, folks in the audience as well, on the consent agenda? All right, Sherlyn, would you call the roll on the consent agenda, please?
Council members Polika.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda, item A is a consideration to appoint Joshua Farr to the Planning Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2015. And Derek, do you want to introduce this item and Joshua?
Yeah, we'd be glad to. Obviously, to my right is, is Mr. Joshua Farr. He's been a resident for some time, and his family's been involved in Ferndale, um, for several years. I'll let you give his, I'll let him give a little bit of his background. But he did apply for one of the vacant planning commission seats. Um, we've met with him on several occasions and discussed, uh, the possibility with him. He has the background and the type of experience that is appropriate for the planning commission that actually fills a need that the planning commission doesn't have right now. Um, so we brought him forward to the mayor and are glad to see him here tonight. With that, I'll introduce him and let him tell you a little bit about himself.
Good evening, council. Uh, my name again is Joshua Farr. Actually, I live at 180 Wordsworth. Uh, been an attorney for about the past five and a half years. I started working in, uh, the area of property maintenance and worked with a property ownership and management team for five years, owning properties throughout the state and the country. Uh, before that, I worked with my parents, who owned rental houses here since I was about six years old, so, uh, I know Ferndale. I've lived here for quite some time. I really enjoy the community, so I really look forward to, uh, the ability to give back. That's all.
Appreciate it. Uh, comments or questions of council?
Nope, just I appreciate your willingness to serve. Thank you.
I look forward to serving with you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, then a motion would be in order.
I move that we appoint Joshua Farr to the Planning Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2015.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. Uh, any last questions or comments? I would just reiterate again, thank you for your willingness. It's a, it's an important board in the city, and I think a legal expertise will be very useful there. Appreciate it. Not to mention a philosophy background as well. I'm sure that will add to the discussion as well.
The planning commission loves to debate, so I
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know that it needs the character of the commission.
So, thanks, Joshua. Uh, so Madam Clicker, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That appointment is adopted. Item B is a consideration to designate the official City of Ferndale voting representative and alternate to the Michigan Municipal League's 2014 convention. Uh, Sherlyn, is that who you're appointing to? Sherlyn, are you gonna designate that?
Um, yes. Oh, no, I'm leaving it to the two who are, I need to decide who would like to represent the city.
The Michigan Municipal League allows us to designate a primary and then an alternate voting delegate. There's two of us from council who are attending the convention this year in Marquette from October 15th to the 17th, and I will proudly say I have absolutely zero desire to be the, uh, official representative, but would be happy to serve as the alternative. Councilman Pollocka would like to serve.
Wow. It's a lot of responsibility.
Interesting, I was gonna say the same thing.
This may be more of a fight than we think. It doesn't really matter. It is a completely easy role, but it's Greg's first
No, it's getting up an hour early one day.
Yeah, if Councilman Pollocka is the first time attending, I, I would, I would hate to deprive him of the opportunity.
You would love that toss of the buck.
Um, I will accept the, uh, the position.
Then I will make the motion to appoint councilmember Greg Pollocka as the City of Ferndale's official representative, and appoint councilmember Dan Martin as the alternative representative to the Michigan Municipal League's 2014 convention, October 15th to the 17th in Marquette, Michigan.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Pollocka.
I can vote no.
Yeah, you can. Any other discussion or questions, comments? All right, Sherlyn, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Greg, for your willingness to do that. Uh, our final regular agenda item is, uh, item C, consideration of a request for an exemption of new personal property for Valentine Distilling Company at its new location of 965 Wanda. Derek, tell us what's going on.
Correct, these are one of those things where we love being in front of you, um, because it continues or points to the continued success of, uh, several projects the city's done in the past. Um, we are here tonight to present an application and a recommendation for approval for a PA 328, which is a personal property exemption for any new personal property purchased by the applicant at, uh, their new expanded facility, which is at 965 Wanda. Um, I think city council remembers some time ago, we worked with the owner of, of the Wanda property to approve a brownfield incentive that allowed the adaptive reuse and redevelopment of a functionally obsolete and pretty significantly contaminated piece of property. Um, since that time, the property has been remediated, uh, the interior rebuild continues to go on as a success. Um, Brass Aluminum, which was a local company, has now expanded to approximately 90,000 square feet within that building. Allied Printing, who is another local company, has used that to expand their warehousing and distribution operations by another 60,000 to 80,000 square feet, um, allowing them to refurbish two additional buildings in the city and bring in additional personal property and stay within the city of Ferndale. And now it appears the building is gonna provide the opportunity for, uh, Valentine Vodka and Fish Hook Distillery to successfully expand their operations. And, uh, Rafino Valentine is here with us, the owner, operator, and president of, uh, Valentine Vodka, to explain where they're at. The 328 application is for a six-year period. Um, it is strictly a locally approved incentive that would abate any new, any taxes on new personal property. Um, the length of the number of years is completely negotiable between city council and the applicant. The state does not dictate a maximum. Um, past practice has been six years for other 328 applications we've done. Um, we are recommending the same in this instance. We understand there's been some confusion with proposal one passing at a state level and the fact that it appears that personal property is gonna go away on a statewide basis. Um, and we think that is mostly, like, most likely gonna be the case. However, as with all legislation, we're still concerned that there'll be, there, uh, lawsuits or other things that may, uh, slow or delay the implementation of it. Um, because of the timeframes associated with the 328 for it to be in place for next year, we need to submit it to the state treasurer's office by October of this year. So without having all of that being resolved, we're still bringing this forward and recommending as a safety net, uh, for one of our local expanding companies, that we go ahead and approve the 328, just in case it takes some time to actually install that or there's changes in the legislation. So with that, I'll let Rafino explain the expansion, their operation, a little bit, and we'll be here to answer any questions.
Greg, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Uh, it was about four years, I think, when, uh, I was last here to start our, our current facility. And just a little update on that, in that time, it was our goal to, to make spirits, uh, they were nationally and internationally acclaimed. That's exactly what we've done. We are now distributed in seven states, over 3,000 locations, and this week, we're gonna be shipping our first, uh, export product to Italy. Uh, next year, we want to bring our seven states up to 15 or 20, and add another two or three countries to export to. In order to do this, uh, we need to expand our manufacturing facility or part of our business. So that's what we would be doing at 965 Wanda, is, is solely manufacturing. Um, it's equipment-intensive, capital-intensive, and liquor is low margin, so this would help greatly.
What would, what would happen at Vester?
So Vester, we're gonna, will remain as, as is. We will keep, uh, the cocktail lounge intact. The back will become more or less a, uh, pilot distilling facility. Uh, if we see the need, we don't really know right now, but we may expand the tasting room at some point, or the cocktail lounge, within the, you know, the same building.
The facility at Wanda, um, is gonna be manufacturing only. You're not gonna have tours, you're not gonna have tastings or anything like that?
We're, we're planning on having tours, but probably only once a week or something like that at most. Not the way we do tours at our current facility, and not a, a retail operation like we have at our facility. I think it would be more on the lines of, you know, a, a big brewery kind of tour deal, you know, if that makes sense.
Now, I'm curious, the, the space that you're going into, do you have room to expand from that? I'm assuming that you're getting two or three additional, what do you call it?
Yeah, we're, we're getting new stills, we're getting bigger fermenters. Uh, at some point, we're gonna, uh, add, um, automated bottling line. Um, you, you know, we hope there's enough room there for us for the next five or 10 years at least. I, I guess we'll have to see how many states and countries we get into, but I hope we outgrow it, I don't, I don't know. But, you know, the way the building is now, there is a little bit of extra room, but we'll see.
Yeah, I've been on a tour. Um, Derek took me on a tour, and that facility is huge.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
May I ask, 'cause I don't think folks at home know, you're not just vodka anymore. What are you, what are you manufacturing in, in the facility?
That's right, we're Valentine Distilling Company. We, we really branded the vodka well, 'cause that's what most people know us as, but we're Valentine Distilling Company. We now make, uh, two different kinds of vodka, two different kinds of gin, we make a bourbon whiskey, and we're also, well, a little bit of breaking news, we're also laying down more aged products like rye whiskey and stuff. And that's what a lot of our new space will be used for as well, storage in barrels of cooperage.
Great, thank you.
Good. And question for you, Derek. So, explain though, you, you, you touched on the, the elimination of the personal property tax. If that happens, as voters just approved, and it happens the way it was designed, would that negate the, the impact of this? But we needed, I know we need to do this because there's a timing issue, we'll get this started, but would that, what would, what would be the effect of that law being fully implemented on, on this?
It would, it would accomplish what the 328 accomplishes on a regular and permanent basis. There would be no more permanent, or personal property tax paid on equipment like what he is purchasing. Um, just because of the timeframes, though, we, we wanted to put this in as a safety net. We fully believe that this is probably an added step, and, and most likely, based on the way the legislation was passed, most likely an unnecessary step, but we just wanted to make sure that, that Rafino and, and I think we may actually have another one coming at the next council agenda for a similar type of situation, that our companies are, uh, receive the maximum benefit of these, these laws, in case there's something put in place to delay them. But to answer your question, probably the, the permanent impact is 328 will be negated.
We won't be doing this anymore.
And there's no, we won't be doing this anymore, and they won't have to pay permanent, or personal property tax in perpetuity at that point.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So if I just summarize, this is just accelerating the process. Would that be a simplified way of?
I don't know if accelerate is the right word, or we've referred to it as a safety net. It, it doesn't, we believe that the Prop 1 will be in place, that this probably won't even be necessary, but in case it's forestalled or in case it drags on, this is in place to kind of fill that gap.
We're mitigating the risk of any future
Gap insurance.
Legislation or anything that would prohibit us taking full advantage of this.
Correctly, it's just to fill that gap if there's a delay.
Right.
And how many others? You said one, one more? We anticipate one more? Or is this a, a pretty advantageous thing for businesses to do right now? Do we expect more?
Well, we, we have one other expanding company, local company. In fact, they're one of the companies that expanded at the same facility, is bringing in a rather large multimillion-dollar piece of equipment. Um, and we've talked with them of providing the same gap, just in case there's a delay. They don't anticipate having to pay personal property tax on it, but we've encouraged them to go through this process anyways, just in case, in case there's a year or two delay. Um, this kind of provides that gap insurance for them, and we expect them at the next council meeting as well.
So is there a motion?
I move that we approve the attached resolution granting an exemption of new personal property to Valentine Distilling Company for a period not to exceed six years, and authorize the city clerk to sign and submit the application to the state tax commission.
Support.
So moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Discussion or comments, additional comments?
Just thanks for your continued investment in Ferndale. We love having you here, your fixture, and really appreciate you staying.
Go forth and expand.
Yes, it is hard to believe, but it's been four years, and you've done a lot of great growth in there, and I'm, and I'm glad you're, and I'm glad to see this site in particular get utilized. As Derek mentioned, 965 Wanda, not only was it contaminated and obsolete, it was our largest industrial property, and it had been vacant for well over a decade. And so these are the exact kind of economic development tools, uh, that, that we had in place to help us redevelop those. I think the state is catching up. I, I supported the Prop A because I think we want to encourage people like Rafino to invest in Michigan and in jobs here and in taxes here, so, uh, but I, but I'm particularly glad to see 965 Wanda filling up with great tenants, great Ferndale tenants, uh, to make that, um, a proud, uh, property in Ferndale once again. So, uh, appreciate your work, Derek, on making all that happen as well, facilitating that happening. Anything else on this one? Sherlyn, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thanks, Rafino, thanks. All right, uh, that moves us to call to council. I see the police chief in the back of the room. Anything for the good of the community this evening? Chief Collins.
Derek is yelling here because the Lions are on, and I have no idea that they're 14, winning by 14 points right now, but
Really?
I was paying attention back there. Uh, we do have a couple of, uh, of, uh, nice things that we want to tell the public about that the police department's involved in. One is, uh, we are encouraging folks to go to the Comerica Bank, uh, Facebook page, uh, and there, there is a home of the brave. Our own detective Moore is in third place for the, uh, singing of the National Anthem competition. If he wins, uh, that's a $10,000 grant to, uh, the city, uh, to the police department. And, um, he, uh, participated last year and came in third, and right now he's in third place. You got until September 20th to vote. You only get one vote, and we, we ask you that you do. Uh, and the second thing we want to tell the public out is, is on Friday, Law Enforcement Torch Run is for Special Olympics, and, uh, it's gonna run through Ferndale. Uh, it'll be about, uh, 12:30 noon on the east, uh, Nine Mile, the east city limits, you know, run up, uh, to the, uh, to the barricades, and then we're gonna go, uh, into the neighborhoods to get back up to the north, uh, and hand it off to Royal Oak. So, um, if anybody wants to come and watch that, but that's, uh, the other things that we're gonna be involved in, several other officers will be running there, trying to talk me into doing it too, because one of the officers fell and dropped out, so.
Excellent.
That's all we have, though.
That's worth the price of admission. Great. Chief Sullivan, anything from the fire department? I'm guessing maybe there is. We've had a busy weekend, no?
Couple of public service announcements, I'm sure.
Uh, yes, Sherlyn, we had a very busy weekend. Um, I went like 48 hours with about 45-minute nap time in there. Um, we had a lot of wires down. That storm lasted about 10, 15 minutes. Uh, probably had horizontal winds at about 75 miles an hour, so it took out a lot of trees and a lot of wires in the community. We had to call in extra firefighters and the CERT team, and they did beautiful. We, uh, rotated shifts of different people as they have different work shifts, so we brought in people at different times, but they stayed through the night protecting the wires. And luckily, they did, because we probably had anywhere from 80 to 100 violations of breaking barricade and pulling tape, because I need to get through here, or I live over here, and I have a right as an American to go through here even if it might kill me. So, we do have a few issues in the city. Um, people don't understand that these wires in our neighborhoods are typically what we call 4800, but they're really 4,800-volt lines carrying a lot of amperage, can pretty much weld your car. But people were walking in, and if they didn't see the lines arcing, sparking, and doing some, uh, really neat light shows, they thought, "It's safe, I can walk by that." But they're not. What they've done is they found ground, and they're going into the ground. If you get close enough, you can hear them buzzing. They melt through concrete and asphalt, just like at the snap of a finger, and if you get close enough, they'll jump into you. So, uh, we did have a lot of people, and we had barricades set up quite a distance from So, we did have a lot of people, and we had barricades set up quite a distance from the dangerous ones, and we had quite a few people still moving through the barricade tape and heading toward these things. So, I would caution people, as I just heard a commercial from DTE on my way over here, to call DTE, but I would tell you to call us, because we'll get there quickly, and we'll put someone on it, and at least mark it. And I know we got behind in catching up on 911 wire calls, because there was such a plethora of them in a short period of time. But we go to all of them, and eventually, we will mark them and barricade them and protect the public from, and protect the public from themselves. So, that is a big thing. If things are taped off, and you see yellow tape, it's not the same as a stop sign or a stoplight. Yellow doesn't mean caution, but proceed slowly. That kind of yellow tape that says fire line, or police line, or DTE live wire, do not cross, means don't go there. The perimeters we set up are to make it safe. Sometimes they're larger than necessary, because just straight up and down objects to tie to are rare in some areas. But it means you need to take a different route. And I had an incident where a lady pushing her child came through the one-hundred-foot mark of two, three bar barricades the DPW had set up for us, and we had two streams of yellow tape house to house. She came under or over the tape and pushed her child in, and I was taping right at the other end of the wires, which were live, and she pushed her child under that tape, and I stopped her within two feet of killing herself and her child. Her attitude seemed to be that of, I really don't get this. I live over there, I have to get over there. And I said, and you will die right here. You need to go another way. She tried to go around me another way. I, nope, there's wires over there too. That's why I'm putting all this extra tape, because people seem to think they can come under the barricade tape, and they have a legal right as an American citizen to do as they so choose. And that is not the case, they don't have that, and they were putting themselves in very dangerous ways. And then the other danger people are taking is with these trees. The trees are down, there's no guarantee these trees are anchored where they are, they can roll, and anybody messing around with the trees starts a domino effect. If they roll, this is going to roll like a meat grinder, and anybody in its path is going to get stuck by branches and pinned underneath. Some of these trees probably weigh up to twenty thousand pounds or more. So, again, the taping off on that isn't for, to disrupt the public and make you mad, and disrupt your pictures of your kids on top of the tree. It's meant to protect everybody and the public safety at mind. So, I really caution people, when you see the tape, stay out of the area. If there are people there, such as DTE, CERT people, or firefighters, or police officers, or DPW workers, listen to them, they do know what they're doing. And just because we walk in amongst that stuff, doesn't mean you can walk in amongst that stuff. So, that's my warning to the public. Please stay away from that stuff. Listen to the commercials. DTE has like several running right now. I believe it was the largest DT outage in history, according to DTE sources. I don't know if it made four hundred thousand, but I know it was breaching there.
Three eighty?
Three eighty. So, I know it was, I was breaching there. I was kind of keeping in touch with it, but we were, we were rather busy with things as they were going. So, I also want to give kudos to the DPW, the police department, and the CERT team, and the firefighters. Everybody did an excellent job, and we caught up with the runs fairly quickly, and everybody worked well together, so I just think we did a great job.
I agree, you did a great job, your folks did, your CERT team was out there in force, and they, that is a testament to you for creating that team, because you have all those extra folks out there helping protect the public. So, great job, great job that nobody was hurt.
Thank you.
And we have heard your warnings.
Thank you.
Yes. Jenny, anything from HR department? All right. Derek, anything else from community and economic development?
No, sir.
No, all right. Joe, anything from recreation this evening?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Joe, anything from your area? No. Lloyd, anything from DPW? It's got to be DPW.
As council knows, we had record-breaking floods, we've had a record-breaking winter, then we had this massive windstorm this weekend, so this week DPW is planning for locusts. And
No, actually not. You say that. I know, right?
But that said, I just wanted to let the residents know that there is a massive amount of brush out there at the curb. Our contractor will be, you know, attending to it on their normal schedule, their regular trash day, so please, you know, go ahead and put your brush out. Because of the amount of brush, we spoke to him today, it may take a little bit longer, but they will get to it. And additionally, just a quick, because we haven't thoroughly vetted the bid tabs yet, but we had some success with our rebid on East Nine Mile. It turns out that between the water main and the rebidding, that will save almost a half a million dollars.
Yeah.
So, it's really good news and great strategy on the part of our engineer. So, we'll be reporting back to council next week, probably some information in your packet.
Great. That's good news.
Lloyd, while you're up there, could you talk to us a little bit about trap, trash pickup from the flooding, the, how we're resuming normal trash pickup this week?
We are resuming everything, you know, on a normal basis, recycling, compost, branch removal, chipping, normal trash days, normal amounts, there are no construction debris at this point, although the transfer station is open for a small fee to our residents, it's posted on Socrates website and a link on ours. So, we're hoping to get back to normal, and you know, the hauler has done an excellent job, picked up many times the amount normal Socrates should be commended for the way that they've handled it as well, went to bat for the communities. Where we're going to be at cost-wise is not determined yet, but we'll bring that information back to council as well.
But residents should no longer put trash out on any particular day of the week, they should now begin to put it out on their regular trash day.
We're no longer accepting construction debris as we were before. It was basically a free for all for all things, so we're back to normal this week.
Those costs amount to hundreds of thousands of dollars in savings to our residents, and we're hoping to maybe be able to get some sort of reimbursement from FEMA as well. Thank you.
And do we have a timeframe? Speaking of FEMA, do we have, I mean, I know that takes a while.
Fifty to ninety days.
Fifty to ninety days, so, okay, good, thanks. Michelle, anything from you this evening? No, all right. Sherlyn, anything from the clerk's office?
We are currently looking for detailed-oriented people to serve as precinct inspectors for the November election. You need to be a registered voter in the state, be comfortable with technology, and have intermediate-level computer skills, and be available on November 4th, 2014. We can offer a half-day stint, or we'd be happy to have you work the full day from 6:00 AM until approximately 10:00 PM. Just contact my office, the election will be here before you know it. We had fifty people working in our precincts, our counting boards, and at City Hall for the primary election, where we only had fifteen percent turnout. We're expecting close to double that turnout in November, so we would like to double our staff of inspectors. Thank you.
Great. April, anything from the city manager's office?
Just a few things. Again, DTA, DTE has mentioned, we're at about sixteen hundred residents without power, that the majority will be restored by tonight, is what their hope is, but there's still be some pockets of a few residents that might be Wednesday or Thursday before they're completely restored. But they did, again, at their top, it was between three hundred and eighty and three hundred and ninety thousand people without power, with Wayne County taking the brunt of it. But according to our spokesperson at DTE, Ferndale is one of the hardest hit in Oakland County with only seventeen hundred residents, which kind of really puts it in perspective of what's going on in some other communities. So, they're doing the best they can to try to get us up as soon as possible. Another reminder too, is that it is incredibly important for all of our residents who experience flood damage, in particular with their water heaters and furnaces, that as they're repairing and putting new appliances in, that they do need permits. We do that for safety reasons, but this city council, the last meeting, did waive all fees as it relates to getting that permit for your water heater and your furnace. We really do encourage our residents to take advantage of that. It really allows for double checking to make sure that it is hooked up correctly, and that it is safe for you and your neighbors, so please don't forget that, and I think that's all I have for right now.
Excellent, thanks. Dan, anything from the legal perspective? All right. Councilman Martin?
I have actually four things, two of them are political and two of them are, the first one is, I want to publicly thank Greg Pollocka and Jeannie Davis for co-hosting with me last night, what was our annual Ferndale Area Democratic Party, Carton Party, and they did a great showing last night. It's a really important election year. If you have any interest, no matter what side of the aisle you sit on, please get involved. There's not that much time between now and November, but I was really grateful for a very strong turnout and just a beautiful setting at Jeannie Davis's house, and a really successful event to try to get people just engaged and motivated, and I appreciate everybody who was able to show up and make an appearance. And secondly, there's a school board election this year, and there are a number of candidates, really great candidates, but in particular, there were two there to hear today, Nan Ker Mueller and Jennifer Lottash, and I just can't emphasize my support for them, and they're running for reelection for school board more, so I was glad they showed up today. And there'll be more to come on other candidates, of course, not taking away from them, but those two in particular, since they were here tonight, I just want to draw attention to them, and grateful that they were here. On the non-political side, the, we are getting ready to start our budget process in the city of Ferndale. And I think everyone can agree that our budget process has improved significantly over the last few years, and we've all been grateful for that. But in the heart and soul of this budget document, I truly believe it is a communication of what our priorities are, and as we get past just the hard numbers, that look at what the budget is and what that reflects in our priorities, there are several steps that we need to add on to the process. And I've had the privilege of working with Councilman Pollocka, and April, and Joe, to sit down and talk about how we can better express that. So, the process is going to change slightly this year, in that we will start with a serious discussion about what our mission as an organization is, and what our vision is that we hold forward as an organization, with those priorities to be expressed in that budget as a communications document. And to that end, in the upcoming weeks, there will be groups with local interest groups, whiteboard visioning sessions that run about sixty minutes, that will be led by members of council, thank you very much, with staff support. And the goals of these sessions is, one, is to gain input from groups throughout the city about what the city's first mission and vision should be, to introduce department heads to those groups, so they know who they are, that's kind of executing the policy that council sets, and the council members that they traditionally necessarily work with, but then also to educate that the mission and vision concepts, they exist in an environment, in a contiguous environment, and not in a vacuum. It's not just us sitting up here, setting this policy, it's a reflection of the community, and the interests of that community, and the uniqueness that is Ferndale and that community. So, during these discussions, we're going to help participants understand what the local, regional, and global trends are. It's not just soliciting feedback, because feedback in a vacuum tends to be not as valuable as if you can lay a groundwork of education about what we're facing, the challenges as a city, and then having a real, meaningful discussion. So, those sessions will be forthcoming, and again, we'll all be engaged in helping lead those with staff support, and then we'll take that feedback and that input to craft and finalize a mission and vision statement for this organization with our own feedback, and the policies that we set forward, and how that is expressed, and what that expression looks like in an actual, real budgetary process, that's not just about hard numbers, that's about a statement of who we are, and how we spend the resources we're stewards for, that's reflective of the city and the community's priorities. So, that's what this year's budget process is going to look like. So, I just want to introduce the concept today and explain that it's going on. April, did I miss anything, or?
No, this is for the whole
Question for you, though, when you talk about the mission and vision of the organization, you're talking about the city of Ferndale
The municipal government.
Versus
Municipal government.
Versus the city of Ferndale.
Correct.
And we're paralleling that a little bit too, with making sure that as an organization of employees, that we can do that same thing after we hear what council's and the community's feedback is as well, so that our employees also have direction on the goal, the mission and vision that the city has.
It's not a one-hit wonder. Every day, an employee makes a decision at many levels, or all levels really, with varying degrees of financial impact, and the ability to clearly articulate with that mission and the values that we hold allows them to make a more informed decision as they move forward, even in just operations. So, we may set the policy, but there's a whole group of very talented people making the city run in the meantime, and to put those guideposts, if you will, out there so they can better understand what we're saying in this budget document adds all the more value to the process, so.
I would just like to say that I'm really supportive of this process, and I think the city's goal-setting has come a long way, even when Kate Baker and Scott Galloway were on here, they were the original council members who actually set up goal-setting to be a formal approach to identifying them, and so I think every organization, whether it's public or private, always evolves their goal-setting. And I think this is a really great step and a forward direction, and I really love that we have an opportunity to be visionary, because for the last few years, we've been focusing on, and they've been very great, good goals, and we've been hitting, hitting them, but they've been operational to survive the financial downturn that almost all cities have had to react to. So, now, how do we think beyond just surviving to building and moving forward? And I think, I think it's a lot more optimistic approach to what we've been dealing with, and I look forward to the process.
Yeah, I'm excited about it. I think it'll be much more meaningful to employees, to us as members of council, and to the public as well, so.
Excellent.
And then my fourth and final thing is, you know, I look forward to the day I don't have to sit up here and say, thanks so much to city employees for responding to the next three-hundred-year storm, because they're coming every two weeks. But boy, you guys never cease to impress me. The fire, the police, CERT, DPW, you cannot be in a position that I'm in, and like my fellow council members are, and be more proud to be able to face residents and citizens in our own services to say, oh my goodness, we're so well-served by a really talented group of people, so thank you very much.
Well said. Councilman Pollocka?
I have a few things, and I apologize to Chief Collins, but I have a question for you in regards to the August numbers. It looks like complaints were slightly up, but arrests were up like forty percent, and I was wondering what was driving that? Over July, so I think July was seventy-five arrests, and August was a hundred and four.
Most of those, we have an uptick in drunk-driving arrests by the midnight platoons, and also there was an upsurge in the number of warrant arrests that were being picked up. And remember, the difference is that now we're now housing our own prisoners, so the officer's that, we expect that those numbers to begin to rise throughout the rest of this year and get more normalized as they make the comparison to 2012, and leave 2013 out of the mix. But now that we're housing our own prisoners, it's becoming easier, you know, some of the things that may have been issued a citation is probably going to, may result in an arrest now, because we have our own facility to take care of that.
Okay, thank you. The, I have three more, four more. Parks and Rec meeting is going to be Wednesday, next Wednesday, the seventeenth. I believe we're at, are we at a park, or are we at Kulik Center? Okay. I think we're back at Kulik Center, because I don't remember us talking about a park. But that would be at 6:30 on Wednesday, September seventeenth, Parks and Rec Board. Lloyd, there have been a number of customers who have been getting sewer letters from the city. Would you share a little bit about that?
Well, with council support, what's happened is, is now that we've been out there and televising four or five thousand linear feet of sewer main, when we discover a problem on private property, we want to take the time and the courtesy to notify our residents that they have a problem with their line, potentially preventing a flood in their own home. If they're blocked with tree roots, or we see from our main that there's a collapsed line or separated line, we have the ability now to, you know, when we see that, we have a standard letter that we created after the equipment became in use last two weeks, and we just drop it off to notify them. That's really what we're doing.
Okay, great.
Great result from that investment.
It is, it is, which leads into my next item, the National League of Cities Service Line Warranty Program. And next council meeting, we're going to have a representative from the NLC to go over this program. I encouraged Lloyd and April to investigate a warranty, service line warranty program for residents to have an option, to pay a few bucks a month. This would guarantee that their line from the home to the street would be guaranteed if it ever needed to be repaired or replaced, and so we'll learn more about the program, but I did want to let residents know that they should tune in or come, if they have questions, to ask the representative of what is and what isn't covered. And then finally, DIY and the Funky Art Festival is this weekend. I'm really shocked that no one from either group was here to announce that, but that is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Streets are going to be closed off, Nine Mile, East and West, and I'm sure it's going to be a great time.
Thanks.
Well, building off the two things that you say, I'm assuming it's my turn.
It's your turn.
I would like the city council to consider reinstating travel for out-of-state travel to attend National League of Cities. Prior to the financial downturn, Mayor Porter and other council members used to go out-of-state to conferences hosted by the National League of Cities. And Mayor Porter sat on the Inner Ring Suburbs Committee, and voila, there was an Inner Ring Suburbs nonprofit created, which I got hired at, so I think there's good national models that are brought to bear onto the local government. And so, I would ask city council to reinstate travel for out-of-state conferences, being judicious which ones add value to what we're trying to achieve in the city. But I think when you only learn within your state that is having enormous problems, you're not really bringing, you're only learning from everybody else who has enormous problems. So, I think it's important that we look outside of our own state borders for new ideas. On top of the DIY, there are two nonprofits who are looking for volunteers at the DIY Fest. Fern Care is looking for volunteers to collect donations at Credit Union One for parking, and I believe Kate Baker is looking for, she's collecting the volunteers on behalf of Fern Care. And if you are interested, you can Facebook me or email me if you are interested. And the same with Citizens for a Fair Ferndale, they're also looking for people to man their booth at the DIY Fest, and you can go to Citizens for a Fair Ferndale, and I believe, volunteer online. I think they have online
Yes, sir, their Facebook and their fairferndale.org website, you can register.
And then following up on what Dan said with And then following up on what Dan said with the school board reelection, I am very supportive of strong women running for our local offices. And we have the fewest number of women serving in local offices nationally. And I think it's very important that we look especially at these candidates whom I've supported in the past to be reelected. So I encourage you to support them going forward. And then tonight, I feel compelled to talk a little bit about the reasons why we are redeveloping our downtown, because it's important to me that I say something about it as we are mid-phases, finishing up Phase One as we look at our parking feasibility study and my financial study. But I also wanted to say, as part of this, is that I'm very thankful to keep hearing from residents about this project in our downtown and what it means to them, what it means to the community, what it means to build something that changes our downtown. And that is the process and outreach that we wanted to have happen. It was specifically designed to be early in the process so that people had an opportunity to continue giving feedback as we went through Phase One and Phase Two. But it's important to me that people understand that keeping the status quo in our downtown is out of sync with Ferndale's values. A Ferndale that welcomes people across all kinds of diversity, whether it's race, gender, age, family type, that is what we stand for. And allowing different types of development and housing choices allows those type of people, the diversity, to move into our downtown. And it's important that we stay focused, that we build something that we love, that we build something that is complementary to Ferndale's character and even enhance it. And I think that is something that we're all focused on, on city council and city staff to make sure that what we build connects and enhances our downtown. And we're committed to making sure that that happens. But doing nothing, if we did nothing and built nothing, that means we are not responding to the needs of our businesses, to the needs of the residents who know that we have some parking problems. And so we have to go down this path in order to solve those problems. But there's other reasons why we're doing this development and why status quo is not an option, is that we've lost 10% of our population in the last 10 years. And every inner ring suburb around us has lost population, including Detroit as a region. The only city that hasn't lost population is Birmingham. They've increased by 4% in the last 10 years. And why? They're redeveloping their downtown. They're providing different options for people to come in and live and work there. And I think that's why their downtown is being very prosperous. And it also increases the real estate value. We are still not back to where we were in 2007 before the housing decline. And I think this is a reason why we're looking at doing a very comprehensive and mixed-use development project in our downtown. And then I think this is the one that we overlook a lot when we talk about our downtown, is that we keep losing tax revenue because of property value and other weird personal property tax fringe changes that continue to noodle away at our revenue. But those tax revenue of new development helps pay for police and fire and garbage pickup and economic development services that Derek provides, which if we don't have that type of funds, we can't provide those services. And then, of course, there's demand for our different housing choices in the downtown. And I posted on Facebook recently, some articles on Time.com that says that cities that don't react to provide new housing choices of loss or condos and apartments because that's what the millennials and the baby boomers want. They're delaying buying houses. They're delaying buying condos. They want to rent. That we need to provide that type of amenity in our downtown. And I also want to say that while we look for the solution to our immediate problems of adding more parking, we cannot ignore the balance of adding more parking, of making sure that we promote walking and bicycling as other options in our downtown because you can't build yourself out of parking. We are not a highway. We are not a strip mall. We are not a mall. And when you add more parking spaces, you bring more traffic, you bring more congestion. And that's what happens when you oversupply your downtown with parking. And I'm really concerned about that because we can't build a tower of parking decks in our downtown. That will not, that is a car prison. That's what I call parking decks in my urban planning focus. You can't have a car prison of 600 cars in your downtown. When your biggest building is a parking deck and not an office or living residential space, you've got a problem. And so I think that's what we, going forward, our process is really trying to address. That Phase One is still underway. We don't have the details of the design because our process wasn't designed to show design because we're still figuring out, can this development of 360 actually be built? Can we afford to build it? How many parking spots do we need? And so I think as we continue going through Phase One, we need, we request citizens to keep giving us feedback, but know that there is a process in place to address your concerns. And the biggest concern I've heard is even if we do develop something, that construction mitigation is the number-one concern of businesses. Oddly enough, my life mirrors city council. I now am helping in my job to help do business assessments for small businesses in downtown Detroit to survive construction of the M1 rail streetcar project. And so I'm learning, how do we help businesses survive and look beyond the construction process? How do you actually capitalize on the development that is coming in your downtown so that you can market to those businesses and you can market to those residents to actually increase your sales for your business? So looking ahead and taking advantage of those opportunities. So that's sort of where I stand right now. And I'm really honored that we have a great process, even though some people are criticizing it. And I welcome that because it only makes our process stronger as we go forward. So for me, my opinion has always been downtowns are not stagnant places. They are energetic and living and need to evolve at the times. And so keeping the status quo of doing nothing means that we aren't responding to our problems and we're not growing. And so for me, having this project, whether or not it goes forward or not, the real outcome is having that vision for the downtown. Because if 360 doesn't happen, we're going to have another developer come in, propose something else, and we will need to respond to that. And we need to be prepared, and we need to be ready as a community to make sure that we are going after the development that we want, that we love, that enhances our character, that does not put us in opposition of another community of, "We don't want to be like them." We need to focus on what we want to be, who we want to be, and build what we love. That's my say.
All right. Thank you. I will be brief. I just have a couple of announcements. This Wednesday, the South Oakland Mayors are resuming our monthly meetings after taking the summer off. And we're going to hear from a representative from compassionate cities. So I'm excited to begin to share some of the things that we started to talk about here in Ferndale about compassionate cities with some of my fellow mayors throughout South Oakland County. And we'll see if, how that philosophy takes hold in this region. And then lastly, a couple of folks mentioned the DIY, and I know we're all going to be out there supporting it because it is grown to be one of the most popular festivals in our town. I just want to remind you that a number of our businesses downtown just lost three days' worth of business because of the power outage. So if you happen to be downtown supporting DIY, any of the businesses, especially along North Nine Mile that were closed for three days, maybe show them some love as well as they struggle to get back to their operations to normal after the power outage. And with that, meeting is adjourned.